So, I have this unique honor to open the meeting. It's 6:30.
Six o'clock.
Sorry, 6:00. Helps to look at a clock.
We don't really meet at 6:30.
We normally start at 6:30. And because we are now a new committee, we do not have a chair, so that's why I'm opening the meeting. I do want to begin by welcoming our new members, Leslie, Leon, and Mark Healy. Thank you very much for running for school committee. We hope to make it very much worth your while. It's a great, great experience. I've done it myself, and it's really worthwhile, so welcome. And with that, I would take a nomination for a chair.
I have a nomination.
Okay.
Henry Spalding.
Sure, you don't want to do it?
Positive.
Okay. So...
You did such a great job.
You guys have done a fantastic job. So, is there a second? Second? Any discussion?
All in favor?
Hey. Thank you. Thank you very much, Brooke. Very kind of you.
Welcome back to the role.
My first order will be to accept, take a nomination for secretary for the 2019-2020 school year. Do I have a nomination for secretary?
Our nominee, Rachel Spelman.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Rachel Spelman as secretary? Opposed? Wonderful. First thing, I also would like to welcome Leslie and Mark. I'm very excited to have both of you guys in the committee. It's been a very rewarding and insightful committee. We do a lot of great work and come across all sorts of different things that we need to accomplish throughout the year. So you guys both bring great experiences, both personally and professionally, have children in Chicaring in various different stages, which is fantastic. So I hopefully can speak for the whole committee and then some, but I'm really excited to have both of you here, so welcome. With that being said, our fourth item on the agenda is public comment. Do I have any public comments? Yes, please state your name and your address, or at least your street.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, and I live at Hutter House Road.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I am the proud parent of a Chicaring first grader who had the good fortune to be in Ally Sepola's class this year, supposed to teach her at Chicaring. And my husband and I were extremely dismayed to learn late last week that Ms. Sepola was not being offered the opportunity to return next year. We found this news so jarring because it is completely at odds with the phenomenal experience that our daughter and her classmates have had this year with Ms. Sepola. Ms. Sepola is an exceptionally talented and dedicated educator. She runs a classroom that is rigorous and also nurturing. She fosters kindness and community among the students, and she gives them the tools that they need to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. She's a model communicator with parents, and indeed, she was an early pioneer of the Bloom's platform that was ultimately adopted by the school. Letting Ms. Sepola go would pose a grave and unjustified loss to the community. With respect, we ask that immediate action be taken to reconsider and reverse this decision. Dover's dedication to excellence in our schools is one of our community's top assets, and it's the number-one reason that many of us chose to live and raise our families here. Recruiting and retaining the very best teachers is a crucial part of that excellence. We have precisely that teacher in Ms. Sepola, as evidenced by those who are gathered here tonight and the many others who've submitted letters in support. It is rare to see a group of Dover parents unite so swiftly and decisively as we have in an outpouring of support for Ms. Sepola and in our collective disbelief and sadness that she will be leaving us and not of her own accord. It's not clear to me why a reduction in force is being pursued at this time. The school budget was approved by the town as requested. The materials circulated in preparation for this meeting suggest that it stems from the elimination of a pre-K classroom, but those materials also suggest that the anticipated enrollment for next year has multiple grades with class sizes hovering at the upper limit. Wouldn't it be better to maintain the same number of sections overall by replacing the eliminated pre-K section with a new K through five section that would bring class sizes down to more desirable limits that are still within the guidelines? And wouldn't it be wise to provide some insurance over the likelihood that enrollments could change over the summer, or that there may be retirements or other matters that would affect the teaching pool next year? Even if short-term budget realities could justify a reduction in staff for next year, our school must be built on long-term planning and long-term retention of our very best teachers. I can assure you from my experience that Ms. Sepola is among the best of the best, and losing her would be a short-sighted, terrible mistake. I thank you for your consideration, and I do sincerely hope that we can find a way to keep Ms. Sepola at Chicaring.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Dr. Gordian, and I removed my child from Chicaring mid-year. I'm a parent of a child who was removed because she was choked, received death threats, punched in the stomach repeatedly, and when I reported it to Principal Diallo, she threatened me, told me to tone it down, challenged what I felt as a person of color and a family of color, and accused my six-year-old of lying for two years. So, that's a glimpse of what's going on, and I wanted to see if you guys are going to address the petition from multiple families who felt that Principal Diallo is not the appropriate fit for Chicaring and who have had horrible experiences, including not just bullying, but IEP programs not being honored. If you don't have a child who's bullied, good for you, but I pray that you do not have a child who's bullied and have to deal with Laura Diallo, because it was a very emotional and horrible experience for me and some other parents as well. So my questions to you is to address the 800-pound gorilla in the room, which is the petition from multiple families who also feel like there's retaliation coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes?
My name is Dr. Manny Fratigno. I live on Stagecoach Lane in Dover. Like Sarah, who is much more eloquent and articulate than I, I'm here to speak about Ms. Sepola tonight. We're new to the community. We moved in last summer, and we moved in because we wanted a better school system for our three young children, and I felt we hit the jackpot. Ms. Sepola has been nothing short of amazing for my son and my family. We've had many challenges this year, which I don't need to go into in this public forum, but suffice to say that if it weren't for Ms. Sepola's support, we never would have made the progress that we've made this year. I'm starting to choke up because she made such an impact, and I just can't imagine that we would let this resource go. She's amazing, and my mom, my sister, they're both public school teachers, and I get rifts and I understand budgets, but I also feel like our town is such that we would want to support this resource, you know, at whatever cost. Some parents were very emotional about this, and we're like, well, maybe we could start a GoFundMe page to fund her salary. People are really motivated to keep her. We love her, and she loves our kids, and if there's anything we could do, I would just implore you to explore those options. The class wrote a letter, which I think we had 100% signatories on it, just again stating our support of her as an educator. I'll deliver that now.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
I believe easily no words to say. Sarah has shared many of the comments that he has shared collectively as a group. I won't go on too long, but also just to, I mean, everything that everyone says about Ms. Sepola being an incredible educator, but also to look at the bigger picture of how can we as a community and a school district retain good young talent. We understand the constraints of unions and when you have to choose from a group when we think we're having a reduction, when we have a reduction in force, but how can we as a community figure out how we can help save the best of the best and how we can get feedback from parents in situations when, like, we wait until, you know, it's too late almost to share all the wonderful things about when we have a real star? And is there a forum in which we can, you know, share feedback throughout the year so that it doesn't, we don't find this out afterwards, and you're hearing all these wonderful stories from us when it's too late? So just to think also, not just, I mean, anything we can do to keep Ally at our school would be incredible, but also to think about how can we retain young talent if this situation ever were to happen again? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm Tracy Maney Clayverkrood. I have to agree with the wonderful women here in Ms. Sepola that has a wonderful reputation. Going along with that, I was told recently that some of the children from out of district will be coming back in, which I think is wonderful. I would like to know how long the process would be for those children to be brought back in and what the supports will be, because my son had a terrible time this year with a child who, in my opinion, might be somewhat behavioral. And I just want to make sure that if there are any more children coming in with those issues, will there be more one-to-ones? Will there be more support to keep the children safe? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, it's Porzo Ming. My son is in Ms. Sepola's class also, too. Everything we're supposed to say, they are. I'm just here to support the people for Ms. Sepola's class, but we are shocked to hear that she's leaving us. So, as I said, everything was said before, but I'm here to support the, all the parents for her, if anything that can be done, the keeper in the school. Because the problem is, we don't want to punish good things, and we just want to reward people who are like, care about her job, not to let them go.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, thank you for coming. It takes a lot to come and stand up and speak. It takes courage, and that is what we would like to see as part of our community. Come when things are good, too, you know? I mean, I've seen a few busy meetings, but it's not because we're here to talk about how great some of our teachers are or about how things are going. So I encourage everybody to feel free to come to our meetings and can celebrate some of our successes as well. There's way more to be celebrated. So I appreciate you coming, and that's a great thing to stand up for your convictions. I'll let you address some of the concerns you might have. One thing I will say, as a committee, we're not at liberty to discuss individuals and employment situations. The hiring and dismissal of any individuals comes down to the building administration. We are always interested in hearing what you have to say, so it doesn't mean things can't get addressed in other ways, but we just can't discuss individual situations. And as far as your comments, I appreciate you coming forward. Thank you. We've been wondering, at least I personally have been wondering when this was going to happen, so I thank you for standing up and saying something.
Oh, absolutely. And I just want to, I didn't write it, so there are 80 people out in the meeting.
That's fine. I appreciate that, and those are things that having discussions and being able to talk about these things is also important, so thank you very much.
Yes, so I couldn't agree more with Henry about how important it is that people have come forward to, you know, to share their concerns and their questions. Henry is correct that, you know, decisions about, personnel decisions, aren't something that are typically discussed in school committee meetings. They just aren't, and the reason is, is that all individuals have rights to confidentiality, so when we have those kinds of conversations, we just don't do it in public forums, and so that makes it always that much more difficult. But I will say that it is true that we made a decision this year to go down a size section, I should say. And the, you know, one of the things that somebody said to me, well, you know, we need more preschools in town, and that's fine, but I think sometimes there's confusion, and I know I've spoken with the school committee about this, there's sometimes confusion as to what our preschool is for. It's actually a special ed program that's intended to meet the needs of special ed students who have services by law. They get identified at three years old and have services coming to them in those three to five years. So typically, our kindergartners start, and that's where public schools are obligated to pick up responsibility. In the case of the students with special needs at three years old, they need preschool services. So Dover and Sherburne, to their credit, years ago made the decision that the best way to provide services to those kids is through an integrated preschool program. So it's a special ed program for which general ed kids are invited to participate, but it's not a wide-open preschool. So when those numbers don't warrant the sections for preschool, we speak openly about it. We didn't, in this case, have the numbers to warrant a second section of preschool. The numbers in terms of the class sizes at the other grade levels are all within our classroom guidelines, and although it's often tempting, I should say, for people to look at those numbers and say, look how close we are, you know, we might go over. It's true, we might. And at that time, typically, in Dover and Sherburne, they respond to it. What we have to do when we're building the budget is project out in February, or maybe even earlier than February, more like December, project out what we think based on past trends our numbers will look like. So, and our projections have held pretty true. Even if you look right now, we're right on target with some of our projections. And those factor in not just houses on the market, because, you know, sometimes you'll hear people say, oh, my gosh, there's so many houses on the market. That means there's going to be an influx of students, but it doesn't always play out that way. Sometimes it's a, some of these houses go to families that send their kids to private school. Sometimes they're families with kids in the secondary level frequently. So what we call that is inward and outward migration, and we don't know really the impact of our inward and outward migration until essentially August. So that's when we really start to get a handle on it. But, so there's two things going on. There's the fact that we did need to reduce a level at the preschool, a section at the preschool, and then there's the fact that we are still believing that our projections are going to hold true and that we will be within our class size ranges that are set by policy. Well, the reason those class size policies matter so much is that if you don't have them, if a school committee doesn't identify what their policy is and what their range is or what their guidelines are, if they don't do that, it's so easy to just kind of, you lose sight of it. Oh, we, you know, we might, we have one or two more kids, let's do it. So they use those as kind of their guideline. So we still feel as if we're in that position. So we don't, we don't, we're not asking for another section, at least not at this time. So we went down a section, and at that time, whenever you go down a section, that is a decision for the principal ultimately. When hiring a teacher, the principals make the decision. They make the recommendation to me at the end of the day, but they make the decision ultimately. And I was a high school principal for 11 years. It would be extraordinarily rare for the superintendent to say to me, yes, I know you did this whole process, but you're, I'm going to overrule your decision on hiring. It's the same thing on dismissing. When the principal makes a decision, typically, it's supported, and I know that that is incredibly hard for people. And it was for me personally. I was actually a teacher who was rift in my first year, rift being reduction in force. I've been there, and I know how hard that is, and I wouldn't wish it on anyone, but it's one of those things that we as a system, unfortunately, being small, have to be nimble as well and adapt. And so that's kind of the background on that.
Great, thank you. Okay. Our next agenda item is an update from PTO. I believe Jen is, someone's giving an update, yes?
I'm going to take Jen's place tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Sarah Perrini.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mid-year PTO co-president. We had a great year. We worked with the school on Bloom's Paper-Free Initiative and really kind of kicked that into year in the middle of the year. We had a lot of our community events at the Science Fair and the International Night, Go Completely Paper-Free. It was challenging to kind of adapt to that, but both those events actually worked out really well, and were great, mannered, and size, and very well-intended, so we're excited that that worked. It was tough to kind of push that through, but it worked really well. So we are continuing with that, with next year, sort of all aspects of what we do, books for the heart, curriculum enrichment. We're going to continue to be 100% paper-free with the school next year. Community outreach was pretty awesome this year. They recently planted a tree, the Make a Difference Club kids recently planted a tree with Congressman Joe Kennedy at the school. They built this beautiful stairway of kindness with kind phrases that went all the way up the center staircase of the school, and they had an excellent food drive. They've done some really beautiful things, and it's really nice to see it. They've been in the papers. I'm not sure if you noticed it, but they've done some really lovely, beautiful things this year, and that program's going to continue next year. For curriculum enrichment, we did the, Holly Beasley's here, she's co-chair of curriculum enrichment. She and Rachel Motley met with the teachers in person to get feedback on CE. They talked about which programs they're loving, which might need to be changed up or which they would like to replace. And after that meeting, the feedback was to remove a few authors, add some new ones in, create some new programs, and then relook at what we're doing for an all-school assembly. I can give you this, and I'll share those with you after, don't want to take up too much time.
No, thank you.
We also launched a brand-new CE website. You can go to our Dover PTO website and navigate it. It's super easy, but it tells you all about what we're doing next year already, so you can see all those new programs that are already in place. Again, we supported the Paper-Free Initiative at the school and moved on to online book orders, and then, and then our, our school kickoff assembly is Author Illustrator Peter Reynolds, and that will be in September. So that's our first big kind of major school CE event for the year. That's really it from PTO. Ami is here. She's our treasurer, but also incoming vice president, and she has a brief update on the budget.
Great, thank you.
Have a handout, that's helpful.
Thanks.
I'll take whatever's extra, but we had a very successful year financially. We budgeted to bring in $58,000.
It's all the same.
And, sorry, sorry. Right, we budgeted to bring in about $59,000. We actually brought in about $72,000. Our check writing campaign was very successful. Participation decreased.
It doubled.
Yeah, it doubled.
That's great.
We had a water. About 50% participated in the check writing. The other fundraising includes things like Dover Days, Amazon Smile, Neon Bank Challenge Grants, and everyone who opens a bank account at Neon Bank and mentions the PTO will get a hundred dollars. So all those were very successful. And then in terms of our expenses, we spent about 50% of our budget was on curriculum enrichment, the bulk of our expenses. Classroom and teacher support includes things like, we awarded $5,000 in grants for various initiatives. We, you know, that goes towards the hospitality as well, so paying, you know, providing dinners for the teachers on open house night. We also give them a $250 stipend each for supplying their classrooms. And then, let's see, the other, the other great ones, the events in the, in the communities, or the community outreach that Sarah mentioned, as well as the events like the Science Fair and the National Night and those things. So we had a very successful year. We have a few more expenses at the end of the year coming in still. And then next year's budget looks very similar to this year. The big difference is, well, it's an auction year next year, so we'll be spending about $20,000 preparing for that, but up to, to gross close to $75,000.
Thank you. You spent more than you brought in, so that's, means it's very generous, so thank you for doing that. And I believe in September, October, we'll have another update. I was talking to Sarah regarding some changes you guys might have in terms of some financial strategies or something like that. Is that fair enough?
That's correct, yeah. Typically, in the check writing year, we'll spend more than we bring in, and that's offset by the auction year, but we've done a lot of work on our, on our last seven years finances that we'd love to...
Yeah, we'll make sure you're on the agenda.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes, thank you for everything.
Any questions? Questions for PTO?
Why do you think the check writing campaign was so successful? Was there a different tactic or approach? What can we learn from?
Well, we sent, a lot of other areas that we helped fundraise for in town, like the library, me and I helped with, and others, that we find taking more of a personal approach as opposed to like in the past PTO, we've often blanketed like mass emails or evil acts. And so we were trying to reach out to folks that we knew and say, please join us in this effort, and a couple people were turned off by that and were not happy to be asked directly over money, but as we all know, we're asked by many organizations for money, and you can always still reach them. So we found that overall, that was successful.
That's actually something that I've seen in other systems where they were selling wrapping paper and everything else to try and raise money, and people came forward and said, you know, if you just tell us what you need, we'd rather just hear, like, what is, what, that's helpful for people to know this is what we're looking for, and they will fund. I've seen that happen many times, so that's great.
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
The paper-free thing kind of, not that it threw us away, but it forced us to think a little bit creatively about how we're communicating.
Yeah.
And out of that came a lot of really good and successful ideas that really helped us and I think made things even easier, like curriculum and available orders being online way easier for a good treasurer, for the curriculum enrich people, for parents. It kind of forced us to rethink what we do and how we do it, and it ended up being really beneficial to us.
But there's that concern, it's just another email going out there, right? So that personal connection probably doubly helped in that circumstance.
I would also add, I happen to be the secretary.
No, no. I want to part from this.
I would also add that I think it was a real focus this year on increasing participation. So not necessarily on the dollar ask, but just to really try to increase the number of families that we're getting, even if it were a smaller amount, and we saw that participation double this year over what had been in prior years.
So did you explicitly say, you know, $20 or something?
Every little bit counts.
Okay.
We had some visuals in front of the school building, too, to show the participation.
Yeah.
With the hot air balloon rising.
I remember that, right up in front of the rock.
Yeah, that's good, because that's a little bit of a, come on, everyone else is doing it, why aren't you kind of tactic? I like that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
See you in the fall.
Thanks very much.
Next item is our administration reports with Ms. Diallo.
So first of all, thank you for all the fundraising, for Chicaring and all the involvement. It's been incredible. And Martha and Leslie, welcome. So glad to have you on.
Thanks.
In my report, I largely reference the cultural responsiveness that we focused on this year and under the guidance of Ms. Sepola and Dr. Healy. It's been an all-district effort to really get to know our students much better on a deeper level and to explore identity and new common sense ways this year, and I think the kids feel much more supported from talking to the teachers about the kind of conversations they're having. They're very different from what they've had in the past around immigration and homelessness and social justice, and I think that's very important, even at the elementary school, to really set them up to be thinking about some of these important issues to prepare them for the real world. So we're very excited about continuing that next year and bringing in more community partners to help us foster more community events that continue to highlight the diversity and the value, the incredible value that brings to our community. Another aspect that I highlighted in my report is a grassroots effort to do more in terms of response intervention, a more focused and a deeper dive into the specific needs of all... of all of our students, whether it's in reading or math or social-emotional learning. We are having all of our teachers pair up, so that we have teachers working with one another on very targeted instruction, and we're excited about rolling that out next year. For the last month or so, we've been laying the groundwork for that, driven by the teachers, and we're so pleased to be able to move that forward. So those were some of the highlights. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Laura? No? Great, thank you. Dr. McCoy.
It shows Dr. Not, not Dr.
I'll need to hear the doctor.
What's that?
Yes.
I gave you a raise. Sorry.
So my report was pretty straightforward. I mentioned the Global STEM Summit, which we had an opportunity to go to a few weeks ago, which really just gave us more evidence that the work that we're doing in innovative teaching and learning is important. And at our last meeting, I think Henry had asked for a kind of more, not too in-depth, but a little more about what the Innovation Committee has accomplished this year, so feel free to jump in because you've seen this PowerPoint presentation a number of times. This is the same presentation that the educators on the committee provided to their colleagues at the June faculty meeting, so it's really an opportunity to give groups just an update of where we are now, and we're hoping to bring more community members and teachers to the table next year to continue this work. So as you're very familiar with the strategic plan, one of the buckets of the strategic plan is to maintain excellence and rigor while adapting best practices and programs to prepare graduates for success in a rapidly changing world. So we do want to maintain our excellence as a school district, but also realize that the world outside is changing and that in order to maintain that excellence, we have to grow with the world. So out of that came the essential question, what skills do our graduates need for success in college, career, and life in the 21st century? That's a very big question, lots of research to be done. So in order to find some answers, we brought together the Academic Innovation Committee this year, which is comprised of 59 members, students, educators, administrators, parents, and community members from all four schools. It was quite powerful coming together. We had groups mixed of educators and parents and students and community members all together from different schools, so every table had a different perspective and a different level that the person was representing. And I think that we had a lot of healthy conversations as well as built some bonds by the end of our 20 hours together. I think it was a little sad to say goodbye or until, you know, until the fall. So we wanted to develop the portrait of a graduate. What do we want our graduates to leave with? What skills, knowledge, and attributes that they're prepared for the next level? So we needed to explore what the skills are that both college and career and life require of our kids. We wanted to build community consensus, which is why we had all stakeholders present at the table, so that we're all on the same page as to what our vision is for the district moving forward. Once this graduate, portrait of a graduate is completed, we are going to use the attributes to make sure that the teaching and the learning that we're doing in the classroom every day and the ways that we're assessing kids support those skills and make sure that we are focusing on the skills over the content. And we wanted to make sure that we are ensuring equity and excellence for all of our kids, no matter what their needs are or where they are from, that we are keeping all of our kids in mind.
And it's interesting to talk about in this room because we're talking about elementary students and you're talking a portrait of a graduate, but a lot of our conversations were about how these attributes and skills are going to need to start in pre-K and kindergarten, things like resiliency, communication. So how do we look at teaching and learning even starting at that level? So it is directly relevant to your kids even today. I think we have to keep making that link because when we talk about graduates, we think about secondary school, right?
Yes, and we have the portrait of a 12th grade graduate, which we're then going to have to figure out the portrait of an 8th grade graduate and a 5th grade graduate, so it is all linked together, pulling in the same direction. So some examples of portraits of graduates from other communities. Here's Shrews Ferry. You'll see that they have their quote-unquote soft skills, critical thinking and content mastery, resilience and focus, collaboration and communication. I don't remember which district this was spun from, but I thought it was kind of catchy. The portrait of a Yellow Jacket, brought in student faces and their mascot. Again, all soft skills, empathetic citizen, purpose-filled communicator. Needham just finished theirs, congratulations, Mr. Kio, we're on that committee. And there is their portrait with their skills, including creative thinkers and problem solvers, socially and culturally responsible contributors, empowered learners. And Wellesley just finished theirs as well. Again, soft skills, that they're going to make sure that all their students are capable of exhibiting upon graduation. So how are we going to go about getting our portrait done? We had three committee meetings that were three hours each at Pine Hall School. The first meeting was an opportunity for us to frame the work and understand what it is that we were doing. The second one, you'll notice, is several months later. That's because there was a lot of work done in between, between panel discussions and presentations and reading. So by the time April came around, we were ready to synthesize our findings on what these key attributes and skills should be. And then May 17th, we kind of brought them all together and started saying, what will our portrait look like? What would the image be? And how are we going to capture these key competencies? So the community events that happened in that January to April window, we had screenings of both Most Likely to Succeed and Beyond Measure, both of which are available on Prime, if you'd like to see them. We had an industry think tank panel, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute, as well as a College in the 21st Century panel. So you'll notice that we were thinking, how do we prepare kids for college, career, and life? We hit all of the target areas. So we watched our documentaries. Our first meeting in January, where we kicked off and started thinking about our work, we had the opportunity to Skype with Dr. Tony Wagner from Harvard. He is globally recognized for work in this field and has written many books. And he really kind of gave us the Cliff Notes as to what kinds of things that we should listen for. In his 20 years of experience in researching kind of the 21st century skills, he's come across seven of the most important competencies, which he cites are critical thinking and problem-solving, collaboration, agility and adaptability, initiative and entrepreneurship, effective oral and written communication, access and analyzing information, and curiosity and imagination. So he kind of gave us a preview of probably what we'd find. That being said, he also works very closely with school districts and schools to say, now that you have these competencies, what does teaching and learning look like in the classroom? And in terms of general US education, not necessarily just Dover Sherburne, but in the US, he's found that there's five contradictions between how to build these skills and what's actually happening in schools. He said our focus on individual achievement with grades and GPAs goes against the idea of innovation, because innovation is a team sport and that in the real world, we often work together in teams. He believes that siloed in distinct disciplines and courses like English, math, and history also hinder us from being able to solve problems from an interdisciplinary point of view. Teacher-directed learning, he feels that students should be able to identify questions and find answers with a teacher acting as a guide or a facilitator on the side. He is opposed to the quote-unquote F-word, as in failure. Students should be given multiple opportunities to fail without penalty. He believes grades should include A, B, and incomplete, meaning you're not there yet. And external motivation, he feels that our students are striving to get those As and Bs, where we really want students to be motivated to learn and have a level of learning for the sake of learning. So he said, those are the contradictions. He's still working with schools to figure out how to address them. He has some ideas, but it's going to take us a while to find the right answers. The industry think tank, we had eight of our own parents from both Dover and Sherburne come forward from a variety of different industries. And we had student moderators ask them several questions about, how did you get to where you are? Did you know that, you know, when you graduated from college, what you thought you were going to be is what you ended up being? How do you see your field changing? Now, what do you see, foresee it's going to be like in 20 years? What skills do people need to be successful in your field? And generally speaking, key points were the importance of communication skills, reading, writing, problem-solving, analytical skills, and grit. They mentioned graduates need to be motivated to continue learning. The world will continue to change and our lives and jobs will as well. Students must learn to fail early. Again, that idea of the F-word, that we need to learn to fail and get back up on our feet and keep going and try again until we get it right. The entry-level jobs are now and will be done by computers, so the point at which our graduates enter the world is going to be much more complex and they're going to be asked to do much more on day one of a work environment than we ever were. Again, interdisciplinary, the world is interdisciplinary, graduates must face challenges and see things through multiple lenses. The importance of field experience, mentoring, internships, externships, service learning, and project-based learning. So again, kudos to the high school for having senior projects and opportunities for some of those things, and we hope to see them expand over time. And above all else, they all said that you have to have a level of learning, because that's what's going to keep you going. When the job changes and the world changes, you have to change with it. So you have to be able to understand yourself as a learner and keep yourself going and employed. 21st Century College Panel, we had a mix of parents who serve as both professors or are on admissions panels in various colleges, as well as our own admissions reps that we do communicate with through the college search process in high school. We had big schools, small schools, suburban schools, urban schools, who addressed a number of questions. Key points, again, the need for students to be resilient, to face challenges, learn to struggle, and rebound from failure. And all of them noted that far too many undergraduates are not able to cope with failure and therefore are seeking social-emotional help at college. They felt that students should have a balance of experiences in school. Yes, they do need to be able to take a test, but also being able to solve a real-world problem with a group is important. That applicants to colleges must find a way to distinguish themselves above standardized tests, and independent project service learning, capstone projects are one way to do that. Colleges are open to non-standard application packets, so they are seeing that a number of schools are starting to move away from grades and GPAs and go towards narratives and portfolios. And they foresee that in the next 15 years, there's going to be a huge migration in that way. And that more and more colleges and universities are developing interdisciplinary departments and programs, and no longer is there a history department and an English department, but things are starting to come together for our undergraduates to learn. We read several books and articles. We jigsawed them, so I think together, we read over 100 articles. And key findings were that the world is changing exponentially. We know that. Now that technology is part of it, the curve goes upwards very quickly. There's a significant paradigm shift in education from the teacher being at the center of the room to the students being at the center of the room and really doing most of the talking and the work during the class period. Skills over content, it's not a matter of what you know, it's a matter of what you can do with what you know. The necessity of lifelong learning, as I mentioned, that we're members of a global community, we should be giving back to our local communities, as well as thinking globally about how we can work together to solve some of the problems that we're facing. The importance of wellness and taking care of ourselves and resilience, being able to rebound, and the development of apathy and activism, understanding what it feels like to be someone else and wanting to step in and help either a person or a group of people moving forward. So the post competencies we have, we're still tweaking the language. We haven't decided if they're going to be verbs or nouns, and we're coming up with descriptors as well. But generally speaking, we'll have communication, collaboration, critical thinking, problem-solving, engaged citizenship, creativity, innovation, and perseverance. And that being said, our image is also currently under construction with a graphic designer, and so both the competencies and the image will be released right when school comes back. We do feel that it represents Dover and Sherburne, and we're excited to have the Communication Committee work with it as well, hopefully part of the branding opportunity that we have moving forward. And so next steps, we're going to finalize the portrait over the summer. We have the principals from all four schools visiting Finland this summer, which we know is an exceptional school system with lots to learn about playtime, downtime, and family time, as well as being able to meet the critical thinking skills that are required on international tests. So we're going to go and take notes and see what we can bring back to Dover Sherburne. We have 13 innovative classroom spaces, K through 12, that are being installed thanks to the DSEF grant. So there are some classes at each of the four schools that are going to get rid of the desks and build more collaborative communities with varied kinds of seating arrangements. And we have a workshop day for DS teachers, so while we had 27 teachers on the original Innovation Committee that was tasked with developing the portrait of a graduate, there is a desire for more teachers to become part of the conversations, they can understand the landscape that we're facing and the movement that we need to make. So we have reached out and said, who's in for phase two? And so far, we have 49 teachers who will be joining us on August 21st to continue the conversation, which is really exciting. That being said, we're going to then meet with teachers next year during professional development time and grade level meetings to talk about how do we get from here to the portrait of a graduate being fully implemented? What do we need to change? What do we need to keep? What do we need to celebrate? What do we need to do differently? We're going to be having conversations with parents as well about what do we love about our system and how can we support our kids to be a little bit more innovative? We have educators pursuing PD opportunities. As you know, with change, you always want to go after the early adopters or the pioneers, so we have some teachers going out to High Tech High, others going to project-based learning worlds. And the design school at Stanford to learn about design thinking and bring that back and start some projects here. And next year, we are hoping that some of our teachers will visit local programs that are doing cool things. Wellesley, Needham, and Concord Carlisle have interdisciplinary programs at their high school that we're hoping teachers will go out and visit. But thanks again to the DSEF, we have an opportunity to send teachers, not just to driveable places, but we'll be able to send five teams of teachers out to schools across the country that are doing cool things to go learn and bring the information back. And then from that, we'll hopefully have an action plan for the foreseeable future on how to start moving in that direction. Our website is available. All of the events are videotaped and available on the website, so if you have any questions, you can watch all six hours of the panel. And then we just want to keep in mind the growth mindset in that we are great, but we can still continue to grow and learn as a district.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Any questions or comments?
I'd want to point out a couple of things that you said that struck me, love of learning. And to build on what Brooke was saying about, you know, build the baseline in habits or experiences at a young age, thinking about chikering, that love of learning statement sort of rung true on how we can do that. And then you also talked about, I think it was at a higher grade, but how they're sort of learning different subjects in an interconnected manner. And I thought about like our project-based learning that we do and chikering, you know, looking at our Spanish classes, looking at history, combining those two together, or how we do some of those programs with science, interacting with math. That's great, so I appreciate you sharing that with us.
Thank you to Brooke for dedicating all those hours.
This was a, this was a big ask for Ms. McCoy to try and pull all those different people together. And, you know, we're a small district, but we're spread out. We have the Sherburne School District, the Dover School District, and then the Dover Sherburne Regional District, and then we all kind of come together. It's a, it's a hard thing to get everyone to agree on what it is we want our kids to know or be able to do, and it takes a lot of conversation. It's not a one-time hit. You don't just explain it to someone and expect everyone to just absorb that. It's multiple hours of conversations and putting things in front of people. So this was a, this was a really big ask. It was a big part of our strategic plan. We have a full category of innovative teaching and learning. And one thing that we find ourselves saying frequently to people is, we're not saying that Dover Sherburne is broken, because it's not. This is an exceptionally strong school system and we do so many things right. And we don't have time, I would ask Beth to go down the list of some of the examples, but there are plenty. You mentioned the project-based learn, the senior projects and global citizens. There are so many things that we are doing, but this kind of allows us to really identify these things and so that you hone in on them, so that you focus on them all the way through your system, it becomes a smooth process of education from preschool all the way up. Everyone knows what to expect. So it's a really important thing, it's time-consuming, and I am truly grateful. And we still have a lot of work to do, but we're making great progress.
It's very inspiring, you know, being here and as a parent, it's incredible what you've done.
Good modeling.
And I'd like to just briefly add, I think it's, you know, wise to have the cross-section of representatives who can get the ball rolling, but we found the same thing, that as we had these successive meetings, we'd kind of refine our thinking and, and they were also dispersed with polling of staff members through the district and parents and kids. And I think that your workshop in August will be helpful as another piece of feedback. And just like you said, Dr. Kio, that we were using it to drive the district's goals in the future, so that, you know, it shapes my department goals and teacher goals, and we can kind of be on the same page and streamline that effort to actually maximize that we can think a little differently about what we're doing in the classroom with kids.
Okay, so our next item, probably need to go through a little quicker. We have the warrant that is in your packet for review, and then a financial update. If you want to touch anything in the warrant, you can just lump everything together, but it's pretty self-explanatory.
Just for the new members, because this committee has, on a routine basis, assigned one person to sign, part of that protocol is that you then get a report of all the warrants that that one member signed on your behalf for your review. I think it will be helpful for the new members to... I think it will be helpful for the new members to meet, probably either come to Central Office or go to Town Hall, and I'll walk you through a warrant, just so you sort of understand what makes up the warrant, and it'll help this make a lot more sense to you. And I will just say too, when you're doing your committee assignments, keep in mind that we still work 12 months, so you'll probably want to put together a vacation schedule so that we know who we can reach out to in the weeks where there are things to be signed, because the town has, they've tightened that up, and they're not releasing checks until the signature is there. So we need to stay on top of that in order to pay our vendors on time. So a summer vacation schedule will be really helpful to us.
You got it.
On your updating, operating update, really, because we just met on May 20th, I didn't provide another statement, because it really is about the same. So just a recap for the committee, you're looking at about a $200,000 positive variance on your operating budget, predominantly due to salaries. And if you remember, there was several positions that had staffing changes, and then a larger position in strategic learning somewhere that didn't get filled that was in your budget. So that comprises your operating variance. And then read a point that we are slightly over budget on added district, but you have operating, positive operating variances to cover that. So we will be returning 100% of Circuit Breaker back to the town when the books get closed on June 30th. And I will provide a sort of a summary report on all of this at your September report, so you can sort of see how the whole year went, and it'll be helpful for the new members. Maybe helpful for you too, maybe just if you want to go back through our old packets and just read the financial reports, and you can sort of see the year play out. Thanks. Any questions on sort of just the status of appropriations, the numbers? Okay. We've included in your packet tonight also fiscal year 20 enrollment projections. We've given you, the left-hand side is where you are right now on June 1st, and that where they're projecting the grade to be next year. Again, there's still a lot of activity that potentially could happen. I will just remind the committee that we were in a position where we probably could have reduced a section in Grade Five, but we held on to it, knowing that if we needed to put it into one of your other grades, that was creeping up a little bit. You have that flexibility, because right now, there's five sections of 5th grade, but you only have 86 students. You could feasibly have four sections at 88 and still be your 22 top guideline. So if any of those classes that are getting a little bit larger, there was that flexibility to swing a teacher. So that was sort of our thought process. I know we haven't talked about it in a really long time, because we probably talked about it in December, but just keep that in mind, because right now, if you have five teachers and you stay at the 86 for 5th grade, you've got 17 in a class, which actually dips below your 18 to 22. So that's where you have some flexibility, if you're concerned about some of those that are in the mid-80s with the four sections.
Okay.
And I wanted to, Leslie and Mark, do you know the written policy on class size? Which is actually in the manual. Well, I brought it for your kids. I have always found it really helpful to refer back to.
Right. So chickering is, for all grades, is 18 to 22. So that's the range that you try to operate within. So obviously, we will, we stay here all year, so we will continue to monitor the enrollments and the movement out throughout the summer. And of course, if there's anything that comes up that the committee would need to address from a budgetary standpoint, we would call a meeting in the summer. But I think because you have that one teacher, that one section that we could play around with, I think you're covered, and I don't see us having to come back to you and add a section.
Okay.
And just to sort of piggyback on your discussion, just remember that the pre-K, when we cut that section, that's totally funded by the pre-K revolving. So that's why it wasn't like splashed out in your general fund budget, because that was completely funded by the tuition revenues from pre-K. So that's, it didn't have an impact on all your budget numbers that you were looking at, because it was completely funded by tuition.
Thank you. Any questions for Don? Thank you very much. Next agenda item, we have some recommended changes for the family handbook.
Yes.
And then we have the approval of the school improvement plan, so we'll take the handbook first.
Yeah. So Ms. Dial and her, what is it, a school council worked together on this school improvement plan. So by law, you annually approve the school improvement plan. It's developed by the school council, which by law, again, is spread out with teachers and parents and the administration. And Laura submitted her recommended changes. You can see the principal letter has a minor adjustment, some staffing changes as a result of the sped reorg, the administrative assistants down to the central office position, the head director name changes. Hours for early dismissal, we changed that time this year. And so we're now just documenting it in the handbook, and then requirements for admission of students. So, and obviously, we had a different grievance and equity coordinators, personnel changes. So those were the changes, I believe. Is that correct, Laura? So no major substantive changes, really just semantics and some cleanups.
Yep. So before we move on to the school improvement plan, anything on the handbook? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the changes to the handbook as stated in your packet? Yes, Rachel, do I hear a second?
One second.
All right. Any discussion? None? All in favor? All opposed? Interesting. One thing I might recommend for the future, as I've sort of taken a look at this, I would like to add this earlier in our schedule, calendar of meetings. Maybe you can have a quick read and then have a second review, so we can just make a note for, I know this is how it's been in practice, but I think it might make a little bit more sense to push it a little earlier in our schedule, so it's not our final meeting before the school year starts.
So that's come up in, I believe Sherburne has brought that up too. The region definitely has a first and a second read. It's just good practice.
Yep.
And so that's fine. We will do that next year.
All right. Thank you. For the school improvement plan?
I'm going to let Laura speak to that, since she developed it with her team.
Thank you. We continue with the practice.
I think you can do it in about a minute.
Sure.
Thank you.
We continue with the practice of having a focus in the area of wellness and a focus in the area of teaching and learning. And then a third area which responds to a district role. So this year, we are continuing, or next year, rather, we are continuing to focus on cultural responsiveness. We are addressing a multi-tiered system of supports, which used to go under the umbrella of RTI, as I was just mentioning. And our third focus tied to Ms. McCoy's presentation tonight is looking at innovation and the elementary role in developing the portrait of a graduate.
Thank you. Hopefully, you find that all of the school improvement plans, and if you see the next meeting, you'll hear it there too, all of the school improvement plans are linking and stemming really from this strategic plan, which is, as it should be. It's a consistent messaging, and everyone is hearing the same things. So I want to thank Laura for bringing it together.
Great. Do I hear a motion, or do any discussion, questions? Do I have a motion to accept the school improvement plan as stated in our packet? Thank you, Brooke. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have a consent agenda, and also in our packet, it's appropriation of grants and our minutes from our May 20th, 2019 meeting. Is there any discussion about those two areas? Great. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated in your packet? Rachel, thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
All right. Leslie, thank you very much. Welcome to the team. Any discussion?
None.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Amy? Finally, in your packet, there's a couple of things for communications only. There's a subcommittee sort of roster that we go through. It's in there from last year. So you'll see some of the committees that we either liaison on or spend time with. I will reach out to you guys throughout the summer and work on getting that slate, and then we can submit it to Central Office.
Yep. Can I add one thing to that?
Absolutely.
Tomorrow night, in my joint school committee report, I mentioned that the start time task force Phase Two has some slots where we could use some people, so hopefully we can add those to your list.
Do you want to do that tomorrow?
Yeah. I'll mention, they're in my report.
Do they need to be identified tomorrow?
No. It would be helpful if you guys could just let us know. It doesn't have to be done tomorrow, but you can communicate and see if there's anyone who's interested.
All right. I'll run with that. There's also a survey that Dover Open Space submitted for any of your comments that you might have. Email me directly, and I can pass them on. I thought reading some of the free text answers for the space is kind of entertaining. But if there's any recommendations, I mean, obviously, chickering space gets used quite frequently, but if there's any thoughts or comments, pass them on, and I will forward them to the committee.
Thank you.
And then there's also a neat report at the end, which is where our graduates are attending school next year, which I always find to be quite entertaining to see who's on the list. Any other questions, comments?
Comments.
All right. I will call meeting to adjourn at 7:01.[1782.87]